Okay, we are on. All right, I would like to open the Georgetown Planning Board Public Hearing for Wednesday, October 22, 2014. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes of August 27, and we have minutes of October 8.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 27, 2014, and October 8, 2014.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded, to approve the minutes of August 27 and October 8. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Second correspondence, Howard, you want to?
They're just cursory notices from the Town of Baux for regarding some applications before the Zoning Board of Appeals, and there's not much interest at the Town of Georgetown.
Vouchers. Let's see here.
Three vouchers for the Board to consider tonight, a total of $952.42. There's one from Gatehouse Media for legal ad. There's one from the Town Planner for some expenses, and then there is one from Larry Graham for his final peer review of Turning Leaf. The last one is paid out of the M account that's established for the Turning Leaf subdivision.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to pay the Gatehouse Media bill for $514.36, and the Turning Leaf review for $375.
I think the Gatehouse, Harry, was $577.42.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at $514 on the bills payable. $514?
Gatehouse, Town Planner.
No, Gatehouse. That, I'm not including that.
Uh, excuse me?
Gatehouse Media's $514.36.
Yep, yep.
And then Turning Leaf is $375, $375.
What's the $63.06?
$63.06 is expensive.
That's the thing that's not in the motion.
Right.
It's not in the motion?
Not in the motion.
Oh, okay.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yep, second.
All right, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded by Tilly, to approve the two vouchers in the total amount of $952.
No. Two vouchers in the amount of?
They don't tally up to $952?
$514.36, is that the one? You leaving $63.06 out?
I'm sorry, I'm just looking at the total.
The two vouchers that Harry is approving in his motion totals $889.36.
All right. Say again, please?
$889.36.
All right, so approve the two vouchers in the total amount of $889.36.
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And can you, what about the expenses, Town Planner?
The expenses I'm putting in are for food purchase for the monthly Department Head Meeting.
Yep.
And each department is responsible for providing food and drinks at the first Tuesday of every month.
This is new, right?
Was it?
This is a new process? Because I've never heard of it.
I've been, I got elected this past October, the first time since I've been here, so different departments have taken it over at different times, so.
Oh, okay.
There's, I think, 14 different departments that are?
Do we have to approve that?
You don't have to, it comes out of my pocket otherwise, so.
What?
Who else is going to pay for it?
Okay.
What is this for? This is for a Department Head meeting?
Yes.
So why isn't this out of the Selectments budget?
Yeah.
Or the Town Administrator's budget?
You don't call the meeting, he does.
Right. What, what, what?
It's funny.
How does? It's my understanding that each department pays for their day of the food, so.
Oh, but they've had them a long time, and this is the first we ever got a bill for it.
Okay, well, maybe I'm the first planner to ask to get paid back, so.
They think you're loaded, I guess.
So this is the way they do it, whoever is sort of heading up the meeting brings the food and?
Brings the food, brings the coffee, and the apple juice, and the orange juice.
All right, that's the way they do it.
So it's just breakfast, or morning, I guess.
I have a motion, we can have some discussion if you want.
I think I need to know more about these Department Head meetings.
So can I just get a motion, and then we can get into some discussion about it if you guys want?
Motion to approve the $63.06 for Department Head meeting expense.
All right, second. I'll second it. Any discussion?
We wanted to know how come this is, seems like extra work for each department to dilly up all this, instead of one.
One department to do it each time?
Yeah.
Maybe that's how it was done before, but it's become assigned that each department, the first Tuesday of each month, all the departments get together and just talk about the general business of the town.
Yeah.
Things that are coming up, annual town meeting or special town meeting, coordination. It's an opportunity for me to present to all the other involved departments activities of the Planning Board and Planning Office, such as Turning Leaf, to let them know where they are in a certain review, to remind them that the Planning Office and Planning Board are entertaining certain types of applications, please get your information in, discussion of the warrant, discussion of the budgets, and they usually last from 9 to about 10:30, 11 o'clock. Two weeks ago, the library put it on over in the pearly.
Okay.
It's usually over here on the second floor.
Is there some information or response that you guys would like from Town Administrator?
I'm just not familiar with it, and I don't understand if, under whose auspices these are held, that's all. I don't get it. And again, I've been on this board for, what, seven years, and I've never seen one of these.
No, this is the first.
This is the first time I've ever seen one.
Yeah. Is it zoning board? I've never seen it.
Would hope you wouldn't get hit for it again. Sounds like a shakedown.
I don't want to see it come out of your pocket.
Yeah, I don't want to see it come out of yours. But, you know, something like this, if this is the only way to get Department Heads to a Department Head meeting, then I would think that?
No, I don't think it's like that. I don't think we talk and say we're not going because they're just serving honeydew this week, so.
Howard, who is the point that is overseeing it all?
Administrator's office.
Okay. Could you just clarify, get a note from him or something, or just ask him for the Board, you know?
Sure.
This policy, is this what the policy is, and just make us feel better with that?
Okay.
And then if we've got a problem with the policy, we can take that up further.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd love to see that policy in writing with the Department Heads.
Okay, so?
Love to see that.
Any more discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so that was unanimous also. Okay. A and R.
The Planning Office received approval not required, application for property referred to as 27 Andover Street. It's, everybody knows it as the Carlton Home. It's interesting that its address is 27 Andover Street, but its frontage is also on Nelson and Cedar Lane. The applicant was seeking the Planning Board's endorsement of the A and R. Plan was provided as well as the Form A, but I've been speaking with the developer, and she sent me an email on Tuesday to Howard Snyder, Town Planner. This is to inform you and the Planning Board that we'll be withdrawing our A and R lot application for the 27 Andover Street property, which is scheduled for tomorrow evening, October 22, 2014, without prejudice. Thank you for your assistance and cooperation in this manner. Diane De Santo.
Motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made to withdraw without prejudice, 27 Andover Street, A and R, it's been seconded by Tilly. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Okay. Public hearing, site plan approval.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Before you open this?
Sir.
Would it be prudent to wait five minutes for one?
One or two others.
Or two more of our members to arrive, even though I hate to think that you'd be inconvenienced, or the applicant would be inconvenienced in any way, I think it might be beneficial if?
Give another five minutes.
If this gets continued, and you don't have enough people to vote.
Going to a Carlton, actually going to a Carlton Home meeting after this, so.
Don't want to see them wait, but any information that we take at this point?
No, no, it's fine, I understand.
What about?
Appreciate it.
Do we have any other business that we could dispense with?
The only other business, we could go to new business, and it's really nothing more than an update, and you guys got to sign.
The MyRs are here.
So they're over there, and before you go home, and Bob?
And Tim.
And Tim was the other one that voted?
Yeah.
You guys got to sign before you go home.
Yeah, we need?
A bunch of sheets to?
We need three sheets, three things.
I anticipate the attorney for Turning Leaf to be here at 7:30.
Okay.
Just to update the Board on what's going on in her side. She's going to be submitting a subdivision permit, some other forms, a Form M and a Form N, I believe.
So, for new business, is that, is she going to be part of that agenda item?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. All right. Well, let's see, it's a little bit after quarter past. Take a five-minute recess.
Which will be good, because I got to make the technology work.
So we'll take a five-minute recess. Keep that way, that's for you.
Okay, we are back out of recess and I'd like to open up the public hearing. Site plan approval, 70 East Main Street. In accordance with the provisions of section 165a3 of the Code of the Town of Georgetown, Georgetown Planning Board will hold a public hearing on October 24th at 7:15 in the third floor meeting room at Georgetown Memorial Town Hall, 1 Library Street to consider Mohammed Jamad's application for site plan approval regarding a proposed development consisting of an interior build-out and any associated site improvements for the purpose of a retail use at 70 West Main Street, Georgetown, Massachusetts. The property is located in industrial A Zone District and is described as Assessor's map C6 lot 117. Copy of the application and plan is on file in the Georgetown Planning Office, may be inspected Monday through Thursday, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. This was published in the Daily News, October 8th and October 15th. Atkins Attorney is here.
Attorney Gary Evans for the applicant Mohammed Jamada. And we are here after going to the Zoning Board of Appeals and obtaining approval for a special permit. And we're here as per their instructions and as per the building inspector's instructions and the planning department's instructions for a site plan review. So, and looking at the property, essentially what's happening is there is really not much happening to the outside of the property at all. In the interest of keeping things the same, we've kept everything the same. Really, the only changes that are gonna come about are that the interior, there's gonna be minimal changes just to change the counter a little bit and the cash register. The bathrooms will stay the same. And the exterior will stay the same, the parking will stay the same. The differences that will happen will be that there'll be added buffer between this site and the residential property that is behind it, over in this area right here. Excuse me, let me see. This is, okay, right over in here. So what happens is that right along here is actually a pretty sharp rise in the property. And this house is up quite a bit higher than the subject property here. So what there is is now is there's actually a natural buffer for sound. Sound travels in a straight line, so if somebody comes in and you were to draw a straight line, it really comes up and misses most of the house. So, but we did talk to the neighbors and we worked out something with them and we're gonna allow them up to $4,000 to do whatever they want for a buffer in between the two properties, even though I think it's probably adequate as it is now. The property previously was a restaurant slash retail operation and the other change would be that the restaurant equipment would come down that was up at the top of the roof area here. So actually, there won't be as much mechanical noise from the property as there had been in the past. Otherwise, what we've done is we've put the plan together and we've asked for site plan requirement waivers and we've listed those 1 through 19. I assume that everybody's familiar with the property and I assume since there aren't gonna be any changes to the outside, that it should be pretty straightforward. I don't know. I don't know if you have any questions or...
You all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Tilly, you wanna start?
I was wondering if you heard anything from the fire department about, is he concerned about coming around the back?
I haven't heard anything from the fire department. I have heard from police and that was simply stated in a letter, "It appears that from these plans, there's no negative impact on public safety in the areas identified." Assessor's office didn't have any comment. And I copied the planning board as well as the applicant on comments from the fire department, but I have not heard...
And the other question I had is the dumpster, it's saying here that you may change it. I think it would be a good idea to put it somewhere else. I mean, that's right in the front, you know, of Endover Street.
Yeah, I thought the same thing. And when the original plans were drawn up, it had it right here, which is, I believe, which is where it was before. And we may wanna change it over here, but you gotta think about it a little bit and sort of have a practical aspect of it and put it someplace where it's at least intrusive as possible. If we do leave it here, we'll put a fence around it so that it doesn't show up that way.
You're gonna put a fence around it if it stays there?
Yeah.
It's unsightly where it is. And then I was surprised the sidewalk is, when they did the urban system, it looks like it's on your property, based on this plan.
I wouldn't surprise me. I have a look at the...
It is, I pulled up, I pulled the references.
But a lot of the sidewalks are actually just, would be an easement rather than actually owning the property.
And the other question I had is the upstairs room, but that's not really site approval, I guess. But I was surprised there's a room upstairs.
Yeah, it's just basically storage.
It's gonna be used for storage.
I don't even know if it's gonna be used for that, but storage is probably what it'd be used for. That's what it's been used for in the past.
Certainly not a residential use.
No.
That's about it.
That's all you?
Yeah.
All right, Harry?
The ones I have are pretty much straightforward. I know this was a special permit from the ZBA.
Correct.
And they listed a number of conditions.
Yes, they did.
And with the planning board, it feels as though it comes to us to make sure that all the technical aspects of those conditions are shown on the second one. That's how I view it anyway. The ZBA decision listed eight conditions. First was the applicant shall construct a sound barrier fence on the 68 West Main Street side of the block.
Correct.
Not the neighbor, but the applicant.
Correct. But it's, it's...
I don't see that show.
Well, the, it's...
I don't actually need to see that show.
Yeah. It is part of the, if you look at the application, it's part of the application and part of the paperwork. And, you know, one of the things that I just did at my house is I put in shelving downstairs and I actually didn't do it. I hired somebody that was about 20 years old and a lot stronger than me to come in and carry the bricks downstairs and put the wood on it and everything else. So whether we hire a contractor or we have the neighbor do it or whatever, it's our responsibility to make sure that it's done as per the instructions of the Zoning Board of Appeals as part of the conditions. As to who we get to do it is neither here nor there. So I think it is part of the paperwork as it stands right now.
Fantastic. I'd like to see the depth and breadth of it represented on the plan. The second thing, this is just my wish list.
Okay.
The board agrees with it or not, I don't know. Applicants shall install reasonable screening on the 70 West Main Street side of the fence to reduce noise installed near the property line.
Can you point that through?
I wish I could. I wish I could. It almost sounds as though the ZBA, either I'm not understanding what they're looking for there and to appropriately do that, I think we need to get a clarification, need a formal clarification from the ZBA because I don't know how you install reasonable screening. And they're talking about a vegetative barrier in this area. That's horrible. We need grassroots.
No, what they're talking about is, the issue as with most board meetings, I think that the board is very sensitive to neighbors and what neighbors want in the process. So we did talk to the neighbors, they are represented by council. And like I said in the beginning, if you were to look at the property, there is a natural barrier. The state of Massachusetts spends bazillions of dollars on putting up these sound barriers. So basically, if you have an embankment or you have a certain type of sound fence like this and your noise is coming in like this from vehicles, it's gonna hit and bounce back this way or it's gonna go up and over like this. So what you have on this property is you have an embankment that is sitting on, yes.
Can I interrupt you just a second? I think you're talking about the first condition now. I'm talking about the second one. Where it's, I mean, they were specific about the 68 West Main Street for the fence line.
Would you reread that one please?
But the second condition that the ZBA pointed out was the applicant shall install reasonable screening on the 70 West Main Street side of the fence, 70 West Main.
Right.
And this is why I'm...
And what they're looking for...
Base of West Street.
Right. And what they're looking for in my testimony here is what they're looking for is on the 70 over on this side, so that we have latitude.
Could you use your pointer, please, to...
Yeah. The issue is between, before the zoning board, is this lot line in here and protecting the residential area or further protecting this from this. Rather than sitting there and saying, okay, this is completely adequate and let me get your 38 experts and say that this sound barrier is adequate, we struck an agreement where we go ahead and we will cause to have fencing and shrubbery put in here so that the property is adequately taken care of. And everybody seemed to be in agreement on that. As far as the board writing, as far as the second condition and the interpretation up here, I'm just telling you, my testimony here tonight is that they were talking about this in here.
Okay. So they're basically looking for what they're calling a sound barrier slash fence along the property line and then stepping back from that, they're looking for reasonable screening.
They're looking for reasonable screening and fence lines over in this area right here. And they've left the language a little bit loose so that you have a little bit of latitude going in there doing this. In other words, you know, I agree, we agree, we wanna keep our neighbor happy, we wanna get it done, and that's why we're giving them control over, you know, what can be done to protect their property. And their own is a sort of an organic situation here where they're interested in their own best interest to make sure that it happens correctly. So we cannot go ahead and complete everything unless it's done in accord with the Zoning Board of Appeals. So any clarification that you need from them, you know, I can give you a testimony I can give you here tonight and I can give your witnesses...
Sounds reasonable to me. Sounds reasonable. Again, let's see it on the plan.
Well, see, see, if I may, see what on the plan though? Exactly what the offense...
Sound barrier fence represented, how long it is, let's see a small detail of what it's gonna consist of, materials and stuffs. And then that reasonable screening that goes beyond it, on the 70 West Main Street side of it, that needs to be represented on the plan.
It creates some difficulty. I'm just, I understand where you're coming from, but it creates some difficulty because it's, it's, I'm exaggerating to make the point. I don't wanna spend $20,000 worth of planning to do a $4,000 job. The property between, the land between the two properties where the embankment is, is kinda funky. In other words, you've got big trees there, do we have to take all the trees down? You know, I think the zoning board left it purposely the way they did so that we could address the issue with the neighbors and take care of it there. If we have to go ahead and put a plan down as to far as what we're gonna do and then if we wanna change it, we're gonna have to come back to the board and we're gonna have to change it again and we're gonna have to change it again and change it again. It becomes difficult, that's all.
So when you finally do draw it, you know exactly what a vision to do so that you don't have to come back and change it?
Well, can we, how about the possibility of getting approval subject to getting a final plan? And when we get the final plan, we'll bring it back to the board and have it submitted. I'm trying to just shorten up the process, that's all.
I can't speak for any other members, but I don't, I don't, I don't do a blank site plan. I'm not gonna put my signature on a blank page of paper. Never will. Again, this is just my opinion, this is the chairman's vote.
Your opinion carries weight.
That handles one and two. If you're looking for condition number three, Eddie Howard provided for you. It was sent to us by an email. Evidently, there was a problem with the recordation of the special permit, it got cut off.
That's been resolved.
Right, but I don't have it in front of me because I only have the old one.
Right.
And it was, what was it, something about a no loitering sign?
Right.
So there needs to be a no loitering sign shown and I don't see that on the plan.
Is that the no idling sign?
I believe it was no loitering.
No, I know, but I was curious what no idling was.
No idling was something that was discussed at the ZBA. No loitering.
Trucks and that, running their motors. Is that what it was?
Yeah, the no loitering, you know, we can comply with the Zoning Board of Appeals and we can put it, put it on, we can put it on several places if you want.
I'm just wondering where the main front entrance really is because I'm not seeing it from the site plan.
If you look at the second page, it does show elevations.
Is that where the black triangle is?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be the main entrance? I would think that would be the side of the building you'd want the no loitering sign on.
No, what the concern was, was this, is that, and concern was that if you look at the back of the property in this area, what the testimony of the neighbors was is that ever since this has been vacant, there are people that sometimes come in this area and they loiter in this area.
Grass area, what's living in that grass area?
There's a grass area, it's tarred over in this area right here and then it gets grass here. So what happens, it's a good place for people to hide back in this area since it's become vacant. So it was one of the concerns and what we agreed to do was a couple of things is we're gonna put a camera here, over here, so that they can see that in the store as to what's going on. And then we'll put no loitering signs there and if kids are hanging around that, or whoever, then we'd make a call and ask, you know, them to move. So that'd be in this area right over in here.
It's pretty dark back there, right?
It's pretty dark there.
Sounds like they need some lighting, but...
There is lighting, there's one light right here and there's one light right there as it's been. And then there are four lights along the front here that are the fluorescent type. And these are the lights over in here, a little bit different, so it lights up the street.
I didn't see those called out on the representations. What is it, your SMGA2 page? I don't see any lighting being shown at all.
I, there is no lighting on the plan.
You're gonna need to show that, I think. I mean, we have a light trespass bylaw, but... Getting back to the no loitering sign, again, they're calling for it, I'm not seeing it.
Where would you like it?
I think you have a few signs.
Yeah, that's something that...
A couple because it's, you know, like there is now at the store across the street from this, you know, cars, trucks idle and then run in, run out, and the truck's still going.
Yeah, it's the same thing that would happen with any restaurant. So as, if you just tell me where you'd like the no loitering signs, I'd be glad to put it in. If you were asking me what the neighbors would like and what the Zoning Board of Appeals would like, what I would tell you is that that really is in this back area over in here. So that's where I would put it, but I don't wanna put anything else if you want, if you want other loitering signs, you can put them up. I don't think it's really an issue for us to put up a $20 sign or a $30 sign. I don't think that's an issue.
I think the issue is the idling and the fumes that come from it, since you are so close to a residential home. That's the big issue, really. And you'll have to admit, that's what trucks do.
Well, I guess, I just wanna stay focused with the loitering right now with Harry.
As far as I'm concerned, I wasn't, shame on me, I wasn't at the ZBA hearing. I don't know where they, where they left you with the impression that they would like to see it, but if you could represent that on the plan, I'd be happy with that.
And what I'd be asking for you, from you, is your input as to where you would like it on the, on the plan, so that, let me give you a little bit of history and that is, is that with the Zoning Board of Appeals, we had to come in twice, once for a special permit, then it wasn't gonna be a special permit, then it was gonna be a special permit. And everything takes time, everything takes effort. I'm interested in complying wherever we can comply, doing whatever we have to do. And it's just like the lottery sign, it's a $30 whatever, a sign that can go up there or maybe it's a $50 sign. But, you know, to spend $3,000 to say that I'm gonna put a sign here, just from a very practical point of view is difficult. So, you know, we'll put it on whatever you want. I'm just asking you, where would you like it as an independent board? The Zoning Board of Appeals, you raised it as an issue, so I'm, before my testimony as it being down in this area is where the concern is. So if...
If that's where, in your best estimate, the ZBA wanted it, that's good for me. I'm happy with that.
Okay.
And again, I'm only speaking as myself, I, as the members of the board.
You're a member of the board and you're speaking...
Yes, the other members though. Just to move forward, number, number four, the applicant shall install a video monitoring system on the sides, plural, of the lot to discourage loitering. I only see one camera being shown, can you show the others?
Well, there's only one discussed, but we can put it on both sides, that's not an issue. If that's what you want.
What is it reading?
In other words, I can, I can talk to the...
On the sides of the lot discouraging loitering.
Right. I can talk to the Zoning Board of Appeals and I can say to them that you've written this, we had a meeting, we are or are not in compliance with what your wishes were and that's fine and I can do that. So I'm asking the Zoning Board of Appeals what its wishes are. It's just confusing because you're interpreting the Zoning Board of Appeals criteria.
Conditions.
Conditions. And that's okay if that's what you wanna do. So if you want two cameras...
With all due respect, that's what I believe we're obligated to do as site plan review, I feel that we're obligated to do that at a minimum, at a minimum we're required to, we are obligated to do that.
Well, if I may interject there, Harry, what we're responsible for is our site approval process. That's what we follow and you don't have to pay attention to anything else, any other board or any other thing. That's irrelevant to our, our responsibility is our site approval.
Okay, let's, let's, let's go back to finish, let's go back to finish what you're, what you were...
I'm reading sides of the lot. It sounded to me as though they wanted something. And again, I'm interpreting, but it sounds as though they, they probably wanted something and I think I would want something a little more...
But I, okay. And I'm just, and I'm just giving my opinion.
If the ZBA will clarify that with the applicant, that it was only one that they were looking for, would that be good enough?
Yeah, if Howard gets something from the ZBA that says that.
Yeah.
If Howard gets something that says that.
Correspondence.
If correspondence from...
So let's maybe get clear...
The ZBA to the town planner, where it, and we have it in writing for the file, yeah, cool.
Okay.
Sure, I'd be cool with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not that you can't add two, but I just wanna get clarification of what they meant. This is part of the problem of them stepping into this territory. That's another discussion.
No further changes, modifications to the building use without reapplying to the Zoning Board of Appeals is number five. Number six, number six says you'll come before the planning board for site plan review. Number seven deals with the operating hours and number eight just says all the existing restaurant equipment is to be removed. So this is five ways. Their conditions, their eight conditions. I think we've covered everything that needs, that I feel, that I feel needs to be shown on the site plan for approval from this board. The only other things, the lighting doesn't seem to be shown and something that's probably gonna be brought up by the town planner or one other board member, you seem to have two signs shown on this and my, I'm not sure we can, I think that's a special permit, I'm not sure.
You can't, you can't give us permission to do it, just as the same way in the spot, you couldn't give them permission to take down a town tree, for instance. They have to go to maybe the tree warden or to the town or to talk to them about that. But what you can do is, is if you think it's okay, you can approve that. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, if they, we have to go back to them, then we have to go back to them. So it's whatever, it's... So it's whatever the, it's whatever the site plan review wants done...
Oh, I know.
Whatever the planning board wants done, we will endeavor to get that done. And so...
As a personal note, since I brought up the sign, one, that's my feeling, that's how it fits with the bylaw. If I thought that two should be up there, I would have voted for two for plumadores. If I thought that three should be up there, I'd be asking the selectman for a warrant article to change the bylaw. One says the bylaw, one's what I'm going to go with. That's just me, again. That's it, Mr. Jim, thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I didn't get a copy of this. I did get copies of the floor plan and the... I just had a question. Is that on the first floor, is that the public floor, is that going to be just for employees?
That's, let me just confirm it, but best of my understanding is it's going to stay exactly as it is now. You go in, it's on the right-hand side, there's a hallway, and there's a public bathroom.
And it's a public bathroom. That would stay as a public bathroom?
It stays, no. From bathroom to...
No, 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 on the...
Stairs, yeah, just one.
On the first floor.
The first floor.
Yeah, it is one.
Yeah, this is one.
Yeah, so that would stay there.
Okay. I concur with Harry that there, I think there's some things that are kind of confusing, and one of the things that is confusing is, what's the real difference between the first two conditions? The first condition says construct a sound barrier, the second one says install screening to reduce noise. Why are they differentiating? What is the difference between that? What's the intent? And I was hoping that we could get some clarification. If we're going to get clarification on the one issue, I think I'd like to get clarification on that as well. What was the, what was their intent?
Well, there's two different sides of the property.
No, it's on the same side.
It's making sure that, what you want to do is make sure that in your site plan approval process is make sure that you don't request something on the plans that is in conflict with the zoning board, and so you're referencing the zoning board decision. You should be more asking Bob if, in, that you would like to see a fence up, and you want me to coordinate with the zoning board to make sure where you'd like to see the fence doesn't conflict with what the zoning board decision is requesting the fence location. So I will do that, but it's, you need to be careful of not implementing into the site plan a specific request of a zoning board decision, you just need to make sure that your request in site plan approval isn't in conflict with the zoning board decision.
I just don't understand what they're talking about.
Right, so you want clarification, so you don't create a conflict.
That's it, I'm asking for clarification.
Okay.
Aside from that, I don't have any other questions.
Mr. Tim?
I like the idea of two cameras. I mean, one, you don't really want, I'm sure the people in the house there don't want the camera pointed at them, but maybe on that...
I wouldn't think so.
Maybe on that, like, maybe on that corner that half faces, like, down Walton Street and half towards the industrial building, whatever it is, that, just that corner, and then maybe one on the other front corner. Yeah, that corner there for one.
I truly think the people that are going to be best qualified to decide where the cameras go are going to be the neighbors. Without a doubt, I think they're going to be the people that live there, they're there, they live with it every day. I used to live at, I used to own and live at 18 Central Street, which is right next to the sub shop, and that's how I got to know everybody in town pretty quickly, because I was right downtown and my kids were downtown, and, you know, I lived down there and I know what it's like to live next to a restaurant or any other place, and with all due respect, I was more knowledgeable about the goings-on and the fence that went in between the properties, probably, and more productive than probably anybody else could have been under those circumstances because I lived it every day. And these people live it every day, and they know what's going on, and as far as, you know, your interpretation of the zoning board of appeals decision, I think that they, what they did is, is they gave us a little breadth in what we were doing, in that the neighbors were there and they testified that, you know, this was okay with them, you know?
What is this?
This is the conditions that the zoning board of appeals put down on a piece of paper when they approved the zoning. So if I'm on the zoning board of appeals, or if I'm on a board, and I approve something, if I approve anything subject to a broad word, then that word's subject to broad interpretation, that's all. And that's okay, that's not wrong, that's not wrong.
Then maybe you should talk to the neighbors if you think it should be their decision, and...
We did.
And where did they want the camera?
They, they, they wanted the camera out back here in this area right here.
Where specifically? Because if you want to define that, that's okay with us, then...
Well, can I define it as I will talk to the neighbor, and wherever they want to put two cameras, we'll put two cameras up? I mean, it may sound, it is a definition that is workable, that's all. It's, I think it's going to be the most productive thing, so I can talk to them, they're going to say, put it here, and then if we want to change it a little bit because we changed our mind, we have to come back to the board. It gets cumbersome, that's all.
Right, but before you put it on the print, if you talk to them and then come and talk to us, like, as Harry said, what type of fence and where?
Okay.
You don't have to draw it like in a full-scale plan, that, I mean, just, I don't know if you can like sketch it on there, or just tell us what they want.
Okay.
And then we sort of say, well, okay, that sounds reasonable.
Okay.
That's my, that's, as Harry would say, that's my opinion.
That's one opinion, if one camera's adequate.
I'm not saying one camera is.
Oh, okay, it sounded like...
It's what, I'm going to see what the neighbor wants, if that's, and if that coincides with what we want.
What I want to do before we start getting into dialogue among ourselves, I want to give you...
Point of information, I just want to know if the neighbor is here.
Yes, he is.
The neighbor is here.
Yeah, my name is Mohammed.
Would this be inappropriate?
Thank you for, you're going to have an opportunity to speak, okay?
The neighbor is not here.
Isn't that the neighbor back there?
He, no.
No?
That's not the neighbor.
No.
Okay.
Anyways, I'll just, I'll put down whatever you want, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to pin you down because I really want to clarify this, so when I come back with the plans, I have on it what you want.
This is, this is one of the problems when applicants come to the planning board and asks the planning board to make these decisions, where it starts crossing a line where the applicant, and trying, for good reason, trying to save costs, does not have a professional who is qualified to make those decisions and show them on the plan. And so to save that cost, they turn to the planning board to make those decisions for them. Planning board then takes on the responsibility and liability associated with those decisions that they make, which they, which we aren't going to do, which we shouldn't do. So it's, it's always a little sticky situation when an applicant turns to the planning board and says, you tell us what you want, where you want it, how you want it. When you start doing that, it's a lot of different opinions versus following best practice versus following professionals' technical expertise, very different.
No, no one of us is a professional on, except for Rob.
And following...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, I mean, that's really all I have to say is, and it seems to me like with respect to the fence, they're talking about constructing a fence on the 68 West Main Street side and another one on the 70 West Main Street side.
This is 70 West Street. It's on that side of the fence. That's why I'm saying, I think it's very confusing.
It's something we're going to get a...
And my point is, I can talk to the zoning board of appeals, and, or Howard can, and clarify what they meant, but as far as a site plan review, what is it that this board finds inadequate on, so we can, we can fix it, and what do you want? And I have to ask you, what do you want? Because there's...
We're getting it, yeah.
Excuse me?
We're getting it.
I have to ask.
You're only going out of four, but four out of five.
It's hard not to ask. If there were, best practices would be the way to go with, I don't know best practices maybe on fencing, maybe on sound engineering there is.
Well, there would, Tim, you're all set?
Yeah.
I mean, the way, the way a professional would locate a fence like that is that because you have the slope condition and because you have the trunks, there's two ways to do it. One way is you go out there and you sort of say, well, I think we can fit a panel here, and I think we can fit a panel there, and I think we can put a post here, and I think we can put a post there, and you kind of do it that way. The other way is you locate on the plan where the trees are, and you locate what the topo is, and then you design based on that, and then you have something in writing that everybody, you know, it's a black and white document that everybody can respond to that's objective, not subjective. So anyways, what, none of this is in order of importance, I'm just going through my red lines.
So what I, if I may, just for clarification, what I have so far is that one of your concerns, not, you're not telling me what to do, but one of your concerns is that there are not two camera locations here. One of your concerns is that there, the lights are not shown on here, and I think those are your two major concerns so far.
The fencing details.
The fencing details, yes, yes.
Screening.
And the barrier, the screening.
Screening, say again?
Rob will have a good list.
Yeah, this is the best of the last.
He's the professional.
Lot of red on that page.
Okay.
Lot of red.
We have another professional, but planner is a professional. So we got two out of three.
Can you just clarify for me, tell me a little bit, the proposed temporary easement line for the bike path location to be determined, can you just fill me in on that?
I'm actually not 100% sure where that came from. I did ask where that came from, and the best answer I got was just from the plans that they were using, and it's proposed, so I don't know who it was proposed by, I assume it's the path that's going down the power lines all the ways up. So whether anything's been done with that, I don't know. So it's, it's...
The, if I can add to that, the recreation path committee currently has their design drawings for the recreation path that will be going through Georgetown as part of the border to Boston. They're currently in at Mass DOT at 75% for review. So I consider or offer up the fact that it says temporary because through the finalization of the design, the alignment of the path may change, and so the limits of the easement may be changed. So to best of their knowledge, when they generated this, they came into our office and looked at 75% design drawings and said, okay, to best of our knowledge, this is the location where the easement can be.
Okay.
It would be great if it didn't say temporary, but it, the design won't be finalized until well after this is approved.
Maybe if their date was there, maybe, of the plan that you're talking about?
Well, and I'll offer up an opinion that maybe that is just rephrased to state the...
State what you just said in short, in terms of...
Yeah, the 10-foot wide easement to follow the centerline of the finalized design of the rail tubes.
Something like that versus this.
Yeah.
The, the clean, in the back of the building, there's a clean-out, a clean-out, an AC unit, those are all existing, right? It's just a little, if you could just add existing, E X T G, to those, it helps envision the drawings. I do agree with Harry about showing the fence and showing, indicating the planting that is going to be proposed as part of that. I do agree with that with Harry, and showing the fence in plan view, but also then providing an elevation of what the fence is going to look like, so it'll tell us the height, and it'll tell us what it's made out of, and it'll tell us the...
The, if you look at the, if you look at the plan over in this area right here, this is where the current fence is, right in here.
Yeah.
And it comes to a point, and then it just kind of stops and drifts off into something that really is kind of broken down and really isn't there anymore.
Yeah.
And what you have is you have a lot of trees that have grown up around it, and in one breath, you really don't want to take down the trees because that's as good of a sound barrier as you're going to get.
Absolutely.
And the next breath, you know, how far they want the fence along there is kind of up to them. I think, you know, some things, there is a good size height here, so I...
There's a good difference.
I think that the fence is really just, maybe it's even a little bit overkill. So I don't think it's a substantive consideration as far as the site plan review, but notwithstanding that, we'll do whatever they want or whatever the boards want, and we're just trying to figure it out. I know they can figure it out.
Okay. So, so the fence, where it would be proposed, and I would agree with you, we don't want to be taking down, there's some pretty good-sized calipers out there for those trees in the back on that slope, and you don't want to be taking those down.
I, actually, I think what they would probably rather do is just take the fence on their property and put up a good-sized fence on their property, on their yard, because I think that's where they're going to get the most use for it. If they go down the hill...
I would agree.
And it goes over on this piece of property...
Yeah.
Then what happens is, it really is going to do absolutely nothing.
I agree, and if you want to talk with them and they're open to that, that's fine, but then we're still going to need to have it reflected.
But then, as, as a technical problem, if you make it, if you make it a condition that this fence goes in further than what the zoning board went through, if you make that a condition, now you're locking the property into this piece of fence being on somebody else's property, and then maybe I have to get an easement for that. Otherwise, I'm going to be running into another problem. You know, sometimes there's a, there's a reason for a certain amount of latitude so that you can take care of some of the practical aspects that you have to take care of, and that's why I'm trying to figure it out.
And I appreciate where you're coming from, but I hope you can appreciate the planning board's position of, if these people, for example, sell the house, our allegiance is to the town and to the general public.
Correct.
And, you know, if these people sell the house and someone else moves in, and there's a fence on their property, that there's no written record as to why it was there, and it was all done verbal handshakes kind of thing, and they say, you know, they take it down, and then this owner says, hey, wait a minute, this was part of an agreement a long time ago, we want that. So we, that's the stuff we have to protect for.
I can understand it, but just look at it from one other angle, and if you can, hey, just bear with me here, and that is that, you know, if a new property owner, we're talking forever here, a new property goes in and says, hey, I don't like that fence...
Yeah.
Because, I don't like it because I don't want it, because I have adequate protection from sound, because I have an elevation on my land, okay? This high, and the sound really doesn't come barreling through there. If I want to take it down, I wouldn't see that as a problem.
But it's on their property.
It's on their property.
All we have as a board, when it's all said and done, is this, that's all we've got. And so it ends up needing to be shown when it's important on the plans.
It would probably be shown on the subject property, not on the next door name.
If I make it on, if I make it on the subject property, it eviscerates what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, that's, so there's the fence that you, they're the two items that the ZBA has asked for, and making sure that we don't, as Howard has talked about, you know, conflict with what they've asked for, but that whatever that solution is, does need to be shown on the plans. With the dumpster, I'm going to want to know what size dumpster you're talking about, and I'm going to want to know the same thing with the fence, the detail of the fence, what it's made out of, how tall it's going to be, and I think you need to determine where the dumpster's going to go now. As one planning board member, I don't want to approve a floating dumpster that could go anywhere. As one planning board member, I don't want to approve a floating dumpster that could go anywhere. So you're going to need to commit to where you want it, show it properly screened, and that it functions and meets your needs. You're going to have to deal with that one now.
What if we would have put down?
Typically, yeah.
I don't see that being described there.
What if we put in two alternative sites? I just don't want to lock it into one site. One of my favorite subdivisions of all time has two driveways going like this for almost a half a mile. And the reason it does that is because the rules said that this is what you had to do, and there was very little flexibility as to a willingness to have flexibility. So finally, somebody just said, okay, we'll do it. And, and what you have is you have a screwy looking, in perpetuity, you have something that, that doesn't, isn't going to be right for anybody.
But I, I would say any design professional should, any.
That's what I said.
Any design professional should be able to make a good design-informed decision of where to put it. And I don't.
Okay.
I don't see that as just a big deal.
Okay.
The, I think the concrete pad that the dumpster will need is, is, is all pretty standard. I would agree with that.
Should be specified, perhaps?
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I.
In the writing.
That's what I mean.
Put that in where it says, "Location may change," when you take "Location may change" out.
How, how, how is the dumpster going to be accessed if you have parking spaces? How's, how's that work?
There's not going to be cars there all the time. I mean, you're going to be able to access it on a reasonable basis, I would think.
So.
Catcher on my part.
Yeah. So is, is there a schedule for the picking up of? Related to the size of the dumpster and how often a truck's going to be coming, and the butter, and the noise, and coordinating that?
There was no plan other than to just handle it as a regular course of business, and that is set up a schedule when they come in and pick it up and take it out.
Maybe you could, maybe you could provide some, provide just some information around that, what the plan is, what the program's going to be around.
I'll call them. My, my tendency is it's going to be difficult to dictate to them exactly when it's going to be, but.
No, no, that, you can't, you won't be able to. I'm not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting that if you're putting it behind parking spaces.
I mean, I, I assume that we could put temporary signs there on Thursdays that, you know, Thursday afternoon for two hours or in the afternoon, please don't park there. I think it's a problem that could be taken care of. I don't know if that.
Why, why would you not put it in that other area? Where the grassed area is?
That's where it belongs.
I would think there'd be better access for the truck to be able to pull in and back out as opposed to trying to negotiate around the.
I would too.
If that's what you think the best decision is, that's.
Well, again.
I, I don't, I don't. And we'll have the designer go ahead and put where he thinks it's best.
Well, if you contact whoever your disposal contractor will be, they'll probably be able to give you a better understanding of where it's often locations.
You just, I, you want to have access that's open all the time, where the truck can back in or front end load it, and there's no cars. And that area that's grass is where they have a lot of pavement right up to it. Just seems like it makes a lot of sense to put it there. And it's the furthest, it's away from West Main Street, and it's about the same distance from the house. But then you have room to, to screen it in a way that's even better. You have a lot of land back there to screen it.
Yeah, I'm talking about the paved area though, right?
The dumpster.
Or right where the.
Where the paved area ends, yeah, right where it ends, maybe. That's where I could see it going.
Is that?
Can you, can you, is there a septic system back there?
Can I see a vent there?
I see a septic vent, but I don't see the system.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's a good question. I mean, you don't want to put it on top of a, of a system.
Probably not.
So.
So maybe we need to show the septic. We need to show the septic.
Here's the vent.
Yeah, no, I see the vent.
Yeah.
But you don't know the shape.
You can see the cleanout.
We need to show the septic as part of the plan. So that we could make a determination such as that.
Out front, the, the parking spaces, the way they're currently striped, those aren't ADA compliant. At, at a minimum, you're going to need an eight-foot wide van stall. And then you also need an eight-foot wide travel aisle. And that's the absolute minimum. And so there's 16 feet total. So however you want to make that work, that needs to get restripped to become ADA compliant.
Does this, where it's an existing structure, an existing plan, does it come under the ADA?
This is for site plan approval. I believe it does.
You believe it does?
Yeah. Howard?
I don't know if it triggers it.
Does in my mind. Is that important?
It's important. That chart.
I, I think you could argue that these are existing conditions, and you can, and you can stick with them. And I think you, and I think you can argue the fact that the, the previous uses may have a different traffic demand. And who knows the last time this striping was put down, and it may have conformed at the time, but does it now? And it's part of the diligence of ensuring that, the, the board's diligence is ensuring that this use and how it is accommodated on the site and on the property considers all these things, so.
So I.
I wouldn't put it on the planning board to determine if it's, it's in conformance, but I think the board is informing the applicant to please investigate if this is in conformance or not. If it isn't, it needs to be fixed.
All right, so we'll do that.
Let's see. I agree with Harry's lighting comment about indicating that.
But not, not so far.
As an academic point, I do question marks.
Not, not at this point. Not at this point.
What the board's doing is imposing ADA independently from ADA jurisdiction, I think.
Right now?
They're not imposing. They're not imposing.
No, I think what he's asking is, is, to his knowledge, this is what's required. And I think it's being discussed with the applicant, that the applicant needs to make sure that what it is on the site meets code. And you're not, I don't think you've said that if it doesn't get changed, it's not going to get approved, so.
And I believe the ancillary to that is the HP parking sign needs to be shown on the plan.
Okay. Well, you would want it just to ADA specifications, I would assume, whatever that is.
I think these are some of the hardest projects.
And she'll decide.
When, when, when people come and, you know, it's, it falls under jurisdiction of site plan approval. And the feeling from the applicant's point is that we're only doing the work on the inside. The fact remains, it's still site plan approval, and it's still our job to follow the ordinance for site plan approval. And it's the applicant's thinking, I can't believe all of these things are being talked about and added when all we're doing is working on the inside. And they're always very difficult.
I fully appreciate the value of rules. I fully appreciate the value of boards doing their job. I think that there are extremes on both sides. There are developers that will go ahead and just do whatever. I think there are boards on the other extreme that will just clamp down on everything. And I think the answer is, is somewhere in between where it can be.
I agree. I agree.
And you try to work with each other and come up with a reasonable answer.
I agree. Can you take the legend and make it, whoever prepared the plan, PFS, and have it relate to this drawing? It looks like that's a standard legend from their. From their legends file catalog. So it's basically mostly deletions. This is just myself, but there are a number of the waiver requests that I, I don't support. Howard, do you have any feeling, one way or the other, about going through waivers at this point in time or not?
I would just say, at this point, I think that the applicant should just discuss the waivers and what, what they're requesting and why, to help see if that clarifies anything, and get feedback from the board.
Okay.
But changes do need to be made to the plan. I think they can be done in short order before the next meeting.
Okay.
So at the next meeting, you can ask to vote on the waivers, or not approve the waivers.
Okay, so, so in that light.
I think you should.
Let me go through these waivers.
Right.
And certainly. Why was your question? Yeah.
Could I just ask the town planner? What, what is this use? This is a store? This is a retail?
Retail.
Is there a minimum, a number of parking spaces that are required? Or does that, how does that key in? Is that square footage of floor space? Or is that number of employees? I just want to, I, I. That's why I asked the planner, and it's been a very long day.
As he's, as he, as Howard's looking that up, the first waiver, location of all wetlands and buffer zones, and a flood plain shown on, shown on plan, no wetlands on site. I, I don't think I have any problem with that as, as long as there aren't any adjacent wetlands back here, which I'm not that familiar with the land, that may or may not impact the property. But if you're not changing any of the impervious here, then I'm okay with the waiver. This is just me.
I agree with it.
Okay, this is just me.
I'll echo that.
Easements shown on plan, you already have the easements listed on the plan. You have, you have easement in book 369. So because you're already showing them, you don't need to claim a waiver. So I would, and I think the easement should be shown on the plan. So I, I would not support number two.
So the, okay, so if we just take that off, and we're going to handle the proposed temporary easement by referencing, referencing the 75% plan, which is.
You might want to coordinate that language with, with Howard. Well, that's what.
Those are shown, am I locked those up?
That's what this is.
Those are the.
Is, is, so with your easements that you've already shown on the property, and there's no, there would be no waiver granted for easements, you would want to make sure that you include whatever easements impact this property on the drawing. Three, coverage, percentage of buildings and impervious area. There's no change in existing use. I'm okay with that one. I'm just speaking for myself. Zoning lines, waiver, entire parcel lines within zone 1A, that one's fine. This is the one that I am wrestling with. Existing topography, no proposed changes from existing site. And the only reason I wonder about that is I, I don't know if there are any drainage issues. I don't think there are.
Not that I know of.
Yeah, and, and I don't think there are either.
Tonight would be the night to drive by.
I did. And I, what I did.
Actually, I did.
What I did notice, though, was the way it pitches is these little curb cuts. The water will go towards these curb cuts and then go to the sidewalk and then into the street system. So I thought that was kind of interesting, but.
It's shown in the catchback.
I just have a, I just have a question mark about five. Information on location, size, and type of existing proposed landscape features, a proposed plant list containing species, size caliber. I think as part of what the ZBA was looking for, I think we're going to be looking for plant material and what it is going to be and where it's going to go and that sort of thing. So I would be not supportive of that, of number six.
If, if I may, I'm just trying to brook on the nuts and bolts of this. If I were to get a landscape plan where they come up and they, they show the landscape where the fence is, and they show where, and then reference or attach it to this plan, so it'd be a landscaper's plan. It wouldn't be a.
Understand.
So that's probably where I'm going to go. I'm going to say to the landscaper, give me a plan for what you're going to do.
Yeah.
We'll see it. And the only issue, if you could be, think of it while we go through the rest of these, is I got to figure out how we're going to put a fence on someone else's land.
If that's what you end up deciding to do.
Yeah. That's what the neighbors want, so.
That, you'd have to work that out. Let's see, information, number seven was okay. Eight, there would be no changes, that was okay. Location, number nine, location and dimensions of all existing and proposed buildings shown on plan. You've already got it on the plan and on your architectural plan, I think. Foundation plan, those dimensions inside. So you've already shown those, so you just can delete that one. Elevation and facade treatment, the two signs issue.
Eight and nine.
I'm sorry?
Eight and nine.
Since there's no change to the site, if there is no change going to be to the site, then I have no problem with it. But nine, because they're already showing the dimensions on the plan, which then you don't get a waiver for something you're already showing. So you would delete number nine, so no on number nine.
But we'll keep it number eight, right?
Keeping number eight.
Oh, yeah, I missed.
And this is, this is just me.
Getting late, sorry.
Ten, elevation, proposed building facade. This is the two sign issue that comes in here, so I would not give a waiver, I would not be in support of a waiver of number 10. Information on the location, size, and type of parking, loading, storage, and service area, that's the dumpster issue. I would not be in support of that. It's also the handicap, existing parking spaces and layout. So that would be, I would not support that. Zoning setback distances shown on plan, so if they're on the plan, again, you don't need to get a waiver for it. Fire lane, I'd like to follow up on Tilly's and see if we could follow up and get something from, from the fire chief.
Right.
Just to.
I will.
Freshen them again. Fourteen, details and specs for proposed site amenities. That, you know, site amenities would include the fencing, so I would be no to that. Limit of work delineation, only work will be done on interior or building. That's not a correct statement with the dumpster issue. And the fencing, so, so that, I would be saying no to that. Maximum number of employees, and I'm just curious, why do you want to waiver on telling, telling us that, or?
I, I think it's just decision-making 101 is that you don't want to lock yourself in unnecessarily when you don't know how many employees you're going to have. What's an employee? What if you have people coming in and they're doing inventory? Are those four employees doing it? Or is it eight employees doing inventory? You know, it.
But doesn't that directly affect your parking?
Under site plan review, the planning board can even regulate employment numbers, so.
No, it's not about regulating employment numbers, but it's about, yeah, it's about parking.
Well, parking and, and can you read what they're requesting for a waiver?
Can I read?
Reread the, the waiver request.
I'm missing parking.
Maximum number of employees, period.
Right, that's, that's not employee parking, that's employees.
No, but, but employees, then, employees.
Well, there, there is, but there, it, the waiver stating that they don't want, they're, they're requesting a waiver from employees.
Understand.
And all I'm saying is employee parking, because parking is under the review of a planning board and site plan approval.
Right.
Not employees.
But you can't tease those two apart.
I'm not teasing apart. I'm, I'm saying that, that the way it's written.
Oh, oh.
It should just say.
If we would have waived that, we'd probably be throwing away the other, is what you say.
The rules specifically say maximum number of employees.
Okay.
Let's discuss that waiver.
In, in what section of the Bible?
E1W.
Okay, so site distance, no change to existing site configuration. Location of utilities, no change to existing, seemed all right there.
Well, you want the septic, or it's been suggested the septic system, so that would be. So.
Oh, yeah.
Location of all utilities except septic system, maybe?
Location of utilities. Change to existing utilities, yeah, perhaps, yeah, yeah. But again, yeah, that's just me. We're, so we're getting the septic.
Can you go back? What did you say about the site?
The what? The site distance?
Yeah, that wouldn't be an issue.
No.
No.
So I.
So he really doesn't need a waiver, right? Is that what you meant?
What, no, no, I was gonna say, I, I, because there is no issue out there.
No.
I'd say granting him a waiver for that is fine, otherwise he's gotta go and prove it. He's gotta show, he's gotta show work for it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in on that one, it might be, it might be, um, important to see if there's gas and a gas meter and where it comes in, and if it's in proximity to a vehicle, might want bollards. So as far as, um, the location of utilities, I, um, as one member of the board, I think utilities should be shown. I believe they should be shown. I, I really support that waiver.
Yeah, I, 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 I would agree with that, Harry, what you just said, when you reminded me of gas, I would agree with that. That's, that's not a big deal to locate those.
Wasn't the bolt that broke the camel's back?
Actually, uh, I, I know this gentleman from PFS Landis, I, I, I don't recognize that name, but. Most of the, uh, most of the engineers that come before show this stuff. They know to show it rather than come begging for a waiver.
Yep, okay.
Or maybe he's just smart and now he's gonna get a chance to redo them, huh?
I.
It's all about the bill of hours, isn't it, Gary?
These are, these are, um, I've, I've said it before, but these are hard. If I was sitting in your shoes, you know, I would be saying, you know, this is a lot of stuff you're adding to the project, the straw that broke the camel's back, those kind of, I'd be, I get it. And it's an uncomfortable position to be in, in my seat, but I also know that our responsibility is to the town and site plan approval, and so I.
I appreciate it.
So I, I, they, these just aren't easy, um, so.
This has probably never had a site approval on it, ever. This is the first site approval on this property.
Unrelated to these hearings, I would, I'd love to see a joint meeting between the planning board and the ZBA.
So would I.
Well, we, we, that's, that's another point of discussion.
And it's, it's all the.
I understand. So.
Before we go to public comments, I, I just wanna add in, in discussion of the waivers, under article ten signs, uh, industrial districts, districts IA, which this property is located, uh, the following signs are permitted. One sign mounted on the face of the main building not aggregating in area more than fifteen percent of the front wall area of said building. I believe that the revised architectural elevations show a calculation for the signs. So. The applicant wants a second sign, he's gonna wanna request a waiver from this to allow for two signs. And I'll also note that one of the signs is above the roof. Uh, line, isn't it, isn't it roof mounted? And Gary, isn't that sign existing right now? Isn't that where the south sign is?
Both of them were existing, they were approved and, um, and then the, I'm oversimplifying, but essentially the lettering and, and the background was just taken off. Is that correct? You took down the signs for the restaurant and for the ice cream store?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, the, the, the two signs that are shown on the architectural elevations are existing light boxes or existing signs, and all you're doing is switching out the same size sign that's existing with what's proposed. And if that's the case, then I'd like to see just the approval that was given for those two, so it can be part of the record. And that way the board won't have to request anything on it.
Approval with the, uh.
If, if, if.
Cause I, I have a copy of the.
Has received approval for two signs, the way they're shown, I, I'd like to see proof of it.
Okay, we have not had two approvals from the ZBA. There was approval for the old signs that I have a copy of the permits.
Okay.
That's the one that I have.
So you have two permits for the two signs?
Uh, it's one permit and it shows all the signage.
Okay, I'd like to see.
I'll, I'll get that too. It's, it's actually right on the building inspector's file.
Okay.
So.
And that will help clarify what the board needs to entertain in terms of the, the signs.
Okay, um, so I think there's a, I think there's a number of items here and I would like to proceed, uh, I'm sorry. To the public, anybody from the public who would like to speak about this project.
Speak in favor or opposed?
Opposed or?
Take them in order.
My name is Mohammed Amr El Khlaam Deblikan. No, I, I honor, you know, you didn't, I give the law, so all the people laws, the local law, you know, so that's how I do it. Uh, the first thing we are talking about the fence. Uh, actually the board, um, the zoning board, they put the fence because they complained with the neighbor. Because they complain, uh, next door, the S G is here, I think, I think we have to conduct with them. I will give them four thousand dollars, so they're gonna do the fence. So in case they're gonna do the fence, um, what in the case? Then we're gonna give them four thousand dollars, that's Gary's here, I believe, that's, is it right, Gary, I'm right?
Right, but, but what they're saying is that they don't care what our agreement is, they want, we have a responsibility to them. Therefore, we have to say what's gonna be done, so we have to talk to the neighbors and say that you have to tell us exactly what you're gonna do and get, what I'm looking at is just getting a landscape plan is exactly what they're gonna wanna do, 'cause whatever's gonna be done is gonna be hired out anyways. So, um, they should be able to put a landscape plan together, showing what it is. It's a tough thing to set, I, I, I just, anyways, but, but yes, it was to, it was to work with the neighbors.
And, uh, a couple of things, actually, I believe that you mentioned the, the camera and the light. I'll put the camera for my safety, actually, so, and like I gave you two cameras on the plan, but when I go physically, yeah, you know, I come in, I can't see. So the one, the three cameras, so they're quite in place. They have to come back again for another, uh, camera approval, it's okay, like, I put two of the plan. But I put three cameras there or four cameras there, what in the case?
Yeah, you would require the board to, him to come back to the board for approval to add two more cameras um, to, to slightly change the camera locations.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I would think that the, the workaround there would be that you would show where you're definitely gonna put the cameras and then show some additional optional camera locations.
That's one solution.
And the light, actually, light, uh, I have to put like at least I believe, uh, two in the bag, you know, at least full light. I mean, we have some light now, but I'm gonna put like at least a couple of additional light, make sure I have some light outside.
Where, when, you need to show what kind of lighting that is, and there is a lighting ordinance, so make sure that you respond to the lighting ordinance.
Excuse me.
I mean, that's all actually, you know, so.
Okay, and, and again, I think the lighting, just people working in their own self-interest, what the neighbors are interested in is keeping people from loitering as they are now.
Yes.
Uh, but once it opens, I think it's gonna be more active and you're not gonna have that issue as a practical.
Chances are they won't want Klieg lights going right into their bedrooms.
Oh, no.
Well, that's what the ordinance will prevent.
So.
We'll have a, we'll have a thing that says no lights in the bedroom.
Is there anyone else from the public who wanted to speak? Okay, so would the board like to continue the?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to, when do you think you can get all the stuff done? You wanna go to the tenth of December or the twelfth of November?
Is your next to me? Yeah, no, I'm, I'm trying to think of the logistics. I would like to make it for the twelfth of November, and if I can't make it, I'll get back to Howard early and ask for a continuance to the, to the next time, if that's possible.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, continue this public hearing to November twelfth, two thousand fourteen.
Okay, there's been a motion, it's been seconded to continue the public hearing for the commercial lot seventy West Street, seventy West Main Street, uh, to the November twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, um, meeting. Any discussion? No discussion, all favor? Aye, aye. That's that. On the, on that landscape plan, just, um, what I might do if I were in your shoes is grab an hour of the surveyor's time and have him locate some of the key elements along that property, like the big trees, and then once you have those in the plan. You can then, the landscape contractor who's gonna prepare your plan, he can start to piece things together pretty accurately. Just a thought.
The world's a complicated place.
Fortunately.
Also, for the interest of curiosity, you know, like, uh, like if, if the neighbor, like, would got a complaint, that, okay, we don't have any complaint, so what in the case? Like, neighbor go to the zoning board, okay, we had a complaint about this business, so we have no problem now, so what in the case? Is he gonna do the fence?
What, if the, if?
If the neighbor would do the complaint, yeah.
If the neighbor says they have no problem?
Oh, the, the zoning board of appeal ordered it.
No, they were, because basis on their complaint.
You'd have to go back to the zoning board of appeals and deal with them on that.
Yeah, because zoning board, they didn't apply that condition, they apply, because the neighbor complained, that's why they apply this condition. But if the neighbor, you know, I'm not just, it's my curiosity, you know, if the neighbor said, okay, no, we don't have any problem, we all say we just pay it.
Yeah.
Amazing, so in that case, you have to go to.
If you get out with your neighbor and the fence is installed in the landscape, you're gonna, it would, it would be smart for you to get a letter from the neighbor saying they've satisfied what we've requested.
We, we have.
You provide that to the zoning board and the building inspector, because when the, it's my understanding, when the building inspector issues his building permit, he needs to have.
All the conditions.
All the conditions of, of all the permits have, have been met.
So, thank you.
Yep.
I, I would echo the in writing part.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, under new business, um, turning leaf, we, I just wanna let the board know that the twenty day appeal period has, um, come and gone and the town court certified that there was none of appeals, and so that decision, uh, has been handed over to the attorney for the applicant. And, and Bob and Tim, before you leave tonight, uh, the MyLars need to be signed so that tomorrow the town court can sign the MyLars and then the plans can get rejected.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the Form M subdivision permit for Turning Leaf Residential Subdivision. Date of issue? October twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Wait a second. Okay, there's been a motion and it's been seconded to approve the Form M for Turning Leaf subdivision approval. Would you please repeat the date?
Uh, October twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you. Um, any discussion?
Today.
No discussion? You didn't have to add today.
Well, no.
Don't worry, don't worry.
Because it's two years, it goes from two years after that.
And, and you just.
It wasn't an expiration, it was an issuance date.
Got it.
Today's the twenty-second.
Yeah, it's today's the twenty-second.
But it says the twenty-fourth, and I want you to be able to sign it without changing the documentation.
All right. That's why I was looking.
Okay.
All right. Are we all square? All, yeah, right.
The chairman needs to sign it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tilly?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
And all the utilities, uh, the easements and the covenants are gonna be recorded?
I gave Howard the originals, I need to wait for the signed MyLars and stuff to go on record, so I gave him the original signed by the, um, applicant, but the mortgage holder who currently has it, the mortgage on it.
Yeah.
And then I also gave him the covenant obviously signed by both as well.
Give them a law.
And I know my requirements, I think we already had, just to let you know, we already had our site meeting out there with Howard.
Pre-construction.
Yeah, um, Steve, Howard, Steve, I don't, was the construction guy there? Was David?
The, the, uh, we met, we had a pre-construction conference on the second floor, uh, and Steve was there, I was there, uh, John Mativier was not.
Okay.
Um, but the site inspecting engineer, David Varga, was.
He was, okay.
Yeah.
And we did fund your account, um, and now we're in the process of preparing our deed for the parts a lot and we'll do all the stuff, because before we can begin actual constructions on the home, we know that there's another set of criteria. So now we're able to begin the work on the actual subdivision to begin the roadway, and then we'll just, you know, continue to meet the requirements in those, um, timelines.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I can't do it.
Yeah.
Lisa, Jill, do you wanna sign those?
Yeah. Again, with, full circle, talk about three sixty, you just called me Lisa again.
I didn't, I didn't call you that, he did. I didn't do what he did.
Uh, the clerk will have the MyLars, so you can pick those up tomorrow.
Yeah, you can drop them off in the morning, I'll send them coming, get early afternoon and grab them. Do you want a whole set? Do you want me to have them scanned back to MyLar again, so you can have a signed set for MyLar as well, or do you care?
No, wh- once they're recorded, just give me the book and page and then I can get the sheets off, offline.
Thank you.
Form N does not have any place for signature by any person of the board, but the Form G covenant.
Do we need to approve that Form G?
Oh, wait, Form G does.
You should vote because it's gonna require acceptance of a majority of the planning board of Georgetown.
Okay, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to accept the Form G covenant, excuse me, um, let me give you some particulars here. Form G covenant dated October twenty, twenty fourteen.
October what?
Twenty fourteen.
There's no day.
It's dated, uh, this one is October twenty-first.
Oh, okay, on the front page it just says October.
It says October and the day.
So what is the date, Howard?
October, October. October twenty-first.
This is a. That one says October twenty-fourth?
Original.
That's the original, so that I can actually go to record with it, yep.
Okay, so, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned, seconded to approve Turning Leaf Form G covenant dated ten twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, unanimous?
This is on the last page. At the majority.
I'll just also see.
Wait, are we signing?
Is, do you have that signed?
Howard, where, uh?
Okay. Put it posted on the site. I'll scan it after and send it. I have to post it on the site.
That's fine, I'm just wondering if it needs to be.
I give it up and they get to sign it.
No, I'm just wondering if, if that needs to be stamped or anything by the town court, so.
No. It's like a building permit, it's just.
Yeah. You can, uh, scan it and send it back to me.
Excuse me, Hollick, uh, on the first page, two E, uh, other documents specifying construction to be completed namely, and it's blank. Should I just put none in there? We're awaiting nothing more, right, on that first page?
On U R B?
Yeah.
N A?
Yeah, anyone should be.
N A, right?
Um, oh, hold on just a minute. I'm just, I shall not convey any lot subdivision, rec any place, uh, permanent building lot, uh, in accordance with the covenants, conditions, agreements, the application approval of definitive plan. Uh, s- control law. The certificate of approval, conditions of approval.
Would that be where we would put, um, the, what is the agreement that's signed at the pre-construction conference?
The, that's, uh.
Is that where we put this? Is that what gets specified?
That, that wasn't really conditional, that was more agreements about site inspecting, uh, schedules.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And, and things like that.
Okay, we used to have a, um, a, a pre-confer, a pre-conference agreement.
Right, well, checklist agreement, right?
Yeah.
Dave Varga has not.
By all the party.
He, he modified it a little bit from discussion during it, he hasn't sent it out for everybody to sign, I'm expecting to get it.
Okay. Are there any other documents specifying construction, or should I just put N A there?
Uh, yeah, I, I would say you can have the, the pre-construction agreement.
Yeah, put the, put what Howard's saying.
The pre-construction agreement.
Agreement that you're gonna get.
These are my unsigned copies.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, well, I'm gonna go to record, I'm gonna just send them all back to you.
Yeah.
'Cause I have the original with the covenant too for the easement, so I'll send it.
Okay.
You all set?
I think we're wrapped.
All right, I think we are.
It's a wrap.
Is there any member wants to talk about anything right now, tonight? I was gonna bring up some stuff, um, it is a wrap, I don't wanna get into discussion per se, so I just wanna put it on the table. I talked with you about this, Howard.
Yeah.
But just, I'm just putting it on the table, but, um, this, uh, the planning board regulations, policies and procedures, that whole issue, um, and something to, to not only help new members understand what our role is, but to help us, to remind us what our role is and what our role is not. So, to start a spreadsheet that starts to identify, uh, whether it's meeting minutes, how we're gonna, you know, as a category, uh, how to, how to run meetings as a category that are part of regulations and policies and, and a schedule and accomplished. To start this as an item that's gonna get on the agenda, so that it won't come up like this under public reports, but it's actually gonna be a one thing. So, just putting that on the table. If everybody's in support of that, we're gonna, we'll start doing that.
True.
I think that's a good idea.
We'll move that forward.
Uh, you know, to, uh, several times, several different meetings, uh, we were talking, you know, I would bring up some things and it would be, next meeting, we'll talk about that. And it never seems to come to that meeting. So, what I was wondering is where, where we have the, um, member of public or a public report, if we in fact should have, um, in these, maybe in the procedures, that if a planning board member would like to put something on the agenda, that they have that option to do that.
I think that's...
They, they always have.
That, that'll be an item that we're, that we're gonna talk about.
They, they always have, Tilly, and, and just to emphasize, that's one reason why what goes out on Thursday in the planning packet is, is a draft, so if there's something that, after review over the weekend, you wanna add, Monday, we still have time to, to file it with the court. And, and with, keeping with what Rob is, it, there has been a lot of things that said, we should bring that up at a meeting, we should bring up a meeting. And establishing this, this timeline and the schedule, it's, it's, we're making the time for it to, to happen as an agenda item, it would, would be helpful, because there needs to become a balance of, of, uh, the board reviewing applications for permits as well as activity of the board. So it'll help, uh, and not overfill the agenda either, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so...
Do you still have the feedback that we gave you when you queried us on what changes?
I do, I do, I do, and I think...
That kinda ties into that, right?
It absolutely does, it's all part of that, Howard. So, you know, we'll see an agenda item that's gonna be worked in to start this ball rolling. I'll have a, I'll talk with Howard about some form of map or something.
Who has that list, does Howard have?
Howard's got it, I've got it.
Okay.
Like, um, I don't think I compiled individuals all into one sheet, I think I took yours and I took, they just all...
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, but at least we still have that.
I think this, this, tonight, this site approval process has to be discussed and if I remember correctly, I thought, way back now, maybe Harry, you have a recall. Didn't we ask you to, to discuss that with, with the building inspector? To coordinate when we have a site approval and when this, it gets to the zoning board? Because they are doing duplication of a site approval in their permit.
I, 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 I think...
I, I don't agree. I, I, I think they're conditioning the best that they can to, to deal with the concerns of neighbors and doing the job that they think they need to do by supplying conditions verbally. And maybe I'm way off here, but I, you're gonna have a long stretch to convince me that this board is not the board that it should come to for site plan approval for all the details of that. They say sound barrier, sash fence, we specify it.
We figure out how to do it.
We show that, yes, they, the applicant brought it out, we specify.
I don't, I do, I...
As an example, a hypothetical example.
If that is agreeable with the board members, all right, what you're saying.
Just how I see it.
Then, then I think perhaps a discussion with the building inspector to see, should we have a site approval first and then the zoning board?
Uh, I, I think, Tilly, that, that when this board went through four years ago, the, um, with Nick, and established all the flow charts for, for the, um...
The process? Yeah, the development review guidebook.
Yeah, right.
It was well-established that, that, the, the use should be approved, because if they came for site plan and got denied on the use, then, then it's not working.
I just don't think that it's working now, because you're putting the applicant into coming to us and they have to come to the zoning board to get that special permit, because it's pre-existing.
Right, but if they go and get the use approved and then come here, that, I think the problem that's happening is, in, in tonight's example, is that they're coming and said, well, the condition is we're just gonna put up a fence and, and...
They need to articulate.
To the zoning board, that's a condition. To the planning board, the planning board wants to see where the fence is gonna go up.
I think, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to jump in, because I, 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 I see something in the middle. I, I think we're close and, and I think it's how the ZBA perhaps words their conditions. For example, if they were to say all of that and then at the end, um, as determined by the planning board, you know, put up a sound barrier as determined by the planning board or some, but somehow to make it clear that the applicant goes to the ZBA and he's getting, it's clear to him that, okay, they're saying sound barrier, subject, that's what I gotta do, it's gotta be over here, got it, but now how, gotta go to the planning board to figure out how to exactly do it.
Right.
I, so, I think we're close, but maybe just wording of the argument.
I, I think that, well, what it is, is maybe we're just a little bit off on nomenclature.
Yeah.
Maybe what, and I mean, what a sound barrier means to me may not be what a sound barrier is to Tilly or to Tim, or to a ZBA member, so, I mean, and I think that's where the balance of the boards comes in. There's five of us, five people can show our wisdom.
With the zoning, though, you, and I have to remember that you're not that familiar with it, but the special permit is only the use.
Right.
It has nothing to do with the outside site. That is totally in our jurisdiction.
Right, and I understand what you're saying.
It would be so, I think perhaps there need to be a communication going on. Uh, and I thought we had asked Howard to discuss it with, with the building inspector, 'cause he has to be in on its loop.
I, I'm, I'm looking...
Tilly, do you think that the conditions that were, were, um, inappropriate?
I think they were repetitions. I'm trying to streamline the process.
Right, but...
But they, but, and I thought we had done that, but evidently a new board gets on the zoning board and...
What I'm asking is...
They go back to the old way.
If you, if ZBA puts on a condition to add lighting, right, that's not use.
It is.
That's...
It isn't use, that's right.
That, and that's what I'm asking.
That's right.
Is if you think that, well, let me, let me just clarify my question, that you think that the conditions that they laid were conditions that they shouldn't have laid?
That's basically, you know, in some way or another.
No, I understand you, that's all I wanted to do, I wanted to make sure that I understood.
Can I say something?
Sure.
If I may? The conditions that they place upon the special permit are what they, what allows them
To get the special permit.
To grant the permit and the use. Because only by conditioning and adding those conditions, whether they be whatever, the color of the building, the height of the, the, the size of the, the plant in front, by, only by adding those conditions can they then say this will not have a more non-conforming nature and be more of a detriment to the neighborhood than the existing use.
Even, even if their conditions have nothing to do with the use?
Um, no, that, it has everything to do with the use.
For example, the, for example, the sound barrier.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, ZBA, so we are gonna grant you a special permit contingent upon, um, the neighbors complained about sound, contingent upon that you folks resolve the sound issue as determined by the planning board.
Well, the other possibility is like the attorney brought out, which I often thought about, a combined meeting. Then we can all work together, the applicant has one shot at a hearing and it's over.
Yeah, that...
Ba-boom, ba-boom. This way, we're, we're dragging the, the applicant through, through a process that's...
I think that's pretty difficult.
We have such a different...
Such a different agenda.
And it wouldn't matter anyway? Because to have that combined meeting, the applicant would still have to come in with a site plan to satisfy our needs.
But a special permit for what we've been going through is a pre-existing, non-conforming use change. There's been no change to the building, nothing is added on.
Well, but the use changed.
Same park come on.
But the use has changed.
But that's really the point, is the use has changed, but that has to have to do with sound barrier. They're allowing them to change the use contingent upon the neighbor, no, they have three criteria.
What are they, no, uh, no less, no, no less, no? No more detrimental than the existing use, I believe is the first one that they have to do.
Yeah, yeah.
But the, the point is, the use that, that was there may have been something that, you know, there was a lot of traffic at 2:00 in the afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
This might get a lot of traffic at 10:30 at night.
Mm-hmm.
That's different.
Mm-hmm.
Lights coming in.
Kids hanging out.
Kids hanging out. The, the fact that there'd be noise, maybe a dumpster getting picked up. The, the noise, if the noise was the one solid thing that would prevent the special permit from being granted in the minds of those ZBA members, then they put that condition on it so that they can grant that special, that special permit. And, and again, we can disagree, Tilly, but I believe it's our job, if you will, to take that condition and show the specifics of it in technical terms on a plan.
How, how are you gonna adhere to that?
Well, you're, you guys are going to this, these workshops, does any of these workshops have to do with special permits?
Uh, some of them do, yeah, some of them have to do with special permits.
Maybe you could approach whoever's giving the lecture, a question like that, to see if we can get direction.
Right.
Because I really think, it's gotta be...
I really think that, that the language that we're speaking, we just have to get on the same page. How they right there, how they right there.
Are you guys...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to, um, adjourn for the evening at nine, what is that, 9:06? 9:07?
I'd like to second that.
Uh, it's been seconded twice and, uh, there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr....